So I think we'll begin this meeting with getting a fond farewell to Steve DeAngelis, who is not running again for reelection. So we have cake and Steve's going to do us the honor of cutting cake and serving us while we get started.
While you get started, yep.
And be raising a fork to both.
Nice you say you're gonna miss one.
We have meeting minutes of May 19th.
Making a motion approved minutes for May 19th is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Well, that only took 30 seconds. We have warrants number 47 and 48. This is 25-099 and that would be Dave.
One of the bigger ones, but it was 38, 85, 50 to Big Tex Trailers. And I think Eric said that was the equipment trailer for the...
Yep, new trailer for the guys to pull two of the mowers at once and be more efficient. So...
68,584 to Cushing Construction and that was for the work on various roads around town. 2,000 to Dave Ladue for assessing and then 2,500 to the DeRgo assessors for the, that's for the rebound, the 2,500 pass correct. 6350 to RHS Smith, assuming that's the, for the audit.
That is.
And 17,29147 to LG Bay Incorporated for the Church Road sidewalk. Assuming that's all the permitting, engineering.
All that business. Yeah, we're getting towards the end of the detailed design phase. So next we're moving on to the motorway process. And the rest was pretty much business as usual.
Does that mean the audit is getting close to being done?
It is done.
It is done. Okay. But we haven't seen it yet.
No, I have a few folks here, but I will.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
For paying for it, it'd be nice if it was done.
Focusing on the next one at this point. So, yeah.
Great.
I'll make a move.
Second. I give you a second, everything this...
Steve's gonna do all the meeting.
Alright, there we go.
I think that's a grand plan.
That's a great gesture.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I was like, you want to discuss this? Really?
You just did that. Do I have to make a motion to make a second motion?
I thought that was second that emotion.
Yeah, that's right. There you go.
Okay. Hey, Sly from Sly and the Family Stone died today.
He was a musician right there.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, we have select board communication. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Steve?
Is now the time for me to say how much I love you guys?
That'd be great.
Okay, I will say that. I would say that when I first started on the select board, it wasn't all I thought it would be. It was pretty challenging. But then the board that we have now is just tremendous. That's kind of cool, the way we compromise with each other and we complement each other. And I don't mean like saying, you know, nice hair, Dave. I mean like, you know, common women. But and so it's, I don't know, I just feel like it's been actually quite enjoyable. So I want to thank you guys because I would say that you and Eric and even Angelica, you know, so that's all.
Thank you. Angelica, do you have a response?
And nice hair.
It's all relative.
Okay. Staff communication. Eric, the town manager's report and the treasurer's report.
Sure. Alright, so I'll start with town manager's report and roll through it pretty quick. Tomorrow, June 10th, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Alphaline Center at Kent Hill. That's where we have our in-person voting. We do expect a fairly modest turnout. We haven't had a lot of absences and we still have a number of absences out. So we're expecting that just because things are calm, quiet, and just there's not a lot that's really extraordinary, I expect we're going to have a free low turnout, probably the lowest out of the last 10 years, maybe the second lowest or lowest, something like that. So but I think that's a good thing. I mean, we've seen it through the process. People haven't been, you know, coming with torches. So I think that's a good sign. So I do want to thank Steve, speaking of people coming with torches. When he did join, it was, it was quite, quite an environment and I appreciate you stepping up and really helping to settle things down, particularly when I was involved with the Fairgrounds project and kind of calming, calming that sea. So I appreciate that very much, Steve. So the town report is complete and that's available at the polls and also on the town website. We are moving forward with a lot of summer activities. Swim lessons are all ready to go. They're taking registrations. Jen got her lifeguard certification and we have our beach staff fully in place. Heritage Days is going to be August 8th through the 10th and we're going to be having a pretty full set. The library is involved on more on Sunday and we're going to be having Sunday activities, which we haven't necessarily in the past. And we have been getting some, some feedback. I think we might even have a carriage rides, four strong type carriage rides if John Cushing can make that work out because he's been suggesting that he might donate that. So every year we're adding stuff and Jen's really doing a great job working with people and getting people engaged. So we're going to have our first official committee meeting this Friday at 3:30. So if anybody's interested from the board, we are going to be doing, doing that. The rec program expanding. We have a opportunity to support a men's basketball league, generally a pickup. League. Now, this is in part to kind of codify, not codify, but just formalize the relationship we have with the RSU as far as who has insurance, who has access. And so by running this stuff through the rec program, we're going to do activities for folks of all ages without necessarily having to struggle. So Steve's struggling with that cake.
Well, it was a bit of a challenge here, yeah. But I was wondering, do you think they would do an eight-foot rim lead for men, for certain individuals?
I think that's...
So you can dunk?
Maybe the seven foot.
Seven foot. Oh, great. Thank you very much.
No, I think those type of things are really, really possible. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. I think those are all possibilities and...
An eight-foot rim lead, wow.
Really. I think that it's wide open. Talk to Jen. I think that there's, if there's interest and there's enough people, we can make pretty much anything happen. So again, the programming is really expanding and it's great to see all ages programming coming in. And this will be one of the first things we've done that's really geared towards adults. The new storage container is scheduled to arrive on the 19th. That's the one that Rec will have with the passage store able to store all their equipment. We did clear out the site right there by the gate at the transfer station. So we'll have a good location for it. And things are really moving in that area. The town maintenance crew has accomplished a lot in the last couple of weeks and month and they're really picking up steam. I really do believe that they are just continuing to get better, working together. We have a new younger person helping out. He's a college student, Silas Bartol. He actually worked for the Greater Augusta Utility District last year. But anyway, he's gonna, he's already contributing a lot and a lot of energy. So they're really moving forward quickly. Paving is complete on Beaver Dam, North Wayne Road, Lane Road and Morrell Road. And so that involved, on Lane Road at least, some reclamation works. We did have a lot of truck traffic, a lot of gravel, but the tonnage came in very close to what we had estimated. And so we were right on budget, if not a little bit under so far. The only piece outstanding is the application of gravel. And I think we'll come out a little bit ahead on that as well because we did specify two-foot shoulders and in a lot of places on the roadways, that's probably more than what we'll be able to pack in because of ditch lines and driveways, fence lines and things like that. So it looks like that project's going to roll through pretty, pretty handily and stay within budget. So happy to report that. We will be painting, striping after the pavement cures a bit. The idea is that we'll try doing fog line only on a couple of those roads to see if that can help with speed limits. We always do... Fog sometimes done, sometimes not, but I do think that it's worth experimenting with on some of these roads that we just paved because it does reduce speeds by five to 10%.
Just having fog lines, is that...
Or not having a central line.
Yeah.
Because people in their mind think, they see the yellow line, they think, well, they're going to stay on their side, I'm going to stay on my side. It just makes them think a little bit more about where they are on the road and they slow down a little bit. So it's a way to, to help with that. And also, I think especially with Lane Road, all those big dump trucks that are, I mean, they, they were part of the reason why the road had a failure, having a little bit more room so they can maybe come over a little bit.
Drive down the middle of the road.
I mean, well, it helps distribute the weight, honestly. So those, those massive ruts that we had. I'm curious to see what's going to happen. We're going to experiment a little bit.
I like that.
See how it goes. Yeah. So we, we reinstalled the road system management software. That is the stuff that Don Ramlo had put together with the local road center. We're using that again. And I expect that we might be able to get our summer intern or summer worker who's doing road work to maybe help with that a little bit as well. So trying to again integrate the technology to the fullest extent so we can make better decisions. The interior LPF pump station equipment and software are all built out. We're just looking to get a lift so we can get the, get the antenna up. We plan on renting one and bringing it around to a few other areas.